Good afternoon. It's now five thirty. I'd like to call the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five Calhoun County Council meeting to audit. Why don't you give us the evocation, please, ma'am?
Yes, let us break. Dear Lord, guide us with wisdom and clarity in this meeting. May our discussions be respectful and productive. Amen.
You have a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved, second.
Properly moving, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir, what do you have?
No public comments. Motion for approval of the June ninth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting?
So moved, second.
Properly moving, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. The ayes have it. Okay, under appearances, we have Dr. Wallen, Wallace Savannah Council of Governments, update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. Step back just a second. Good to see you all. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the past year with the Lower Savannah Council of Governments, what we've been up to and what's going on with the federal budget right now. I had mentioned to you on the board in regards to the continuing resolution, a little bit about the state, the state budget, what's going on at our last COGS board meeting on the Thursday before last. I just want to catch up on a couple of things I normally do throughout the year. And with the presentation, going down to... Do I have a clicker?
I've got it.
Okay.
What are you doing?
Keep on going fast. Nope. Back, back. That's forward. Start at the beginning. Cool. Okay. That's first one. Next one, one more. There we go. Okay. As I've mentioned before, we were an entity of EDA in the state. So the Lower Savannah Council of Government with the ten, other councils in the state of South Carolina are all state agencies. We cover six counties: Aiken, Allendale, Bamberg, Barnwell, Calhoun, and Orangeburg counties. Our job is to support economic development and equality of life in the region. Couple of our board members are Richard Carson, Helen Carson, James Hagler, Virgil Jacobs, John McLaughlin, Joshua Bond, and Russell Ott is our ex officio and a senator. And we're really happy to have him. Next. Okay. So, nope. Well, anyways, some of the programs that we offer, and I want to go into these, I'm going to go into it in a little bit more detail, but I want to make sure I hit upon these. So y'all heard of the skinny budget, and that is the big beautiful budget act, and that's an act, okay? That is right now in the Senate, in Senate Subcommittee. It's been approved by the House. And in the Senate right now, it's going through the, let's see, Senate of Scott's Budget Committee. And then after that, it will go into an appropriations bill. That appropriations bill, they're hoping to have before the summer hits. You know that they don't like to stay in Washington, D.C. in August or September. And so most likely, you're going to be seeing a bill come out of there prior to October first. And what it looks like will be very interesting. I know that there's lots of conversation going on right now. In that, what we call the skinny budget, there is a number of programs that we administer for the federal government that are proposed to be eliminated. Most of these truly affect rural communities, okay? And so if you look throughout, I'm going to go into some of those, community development block grants. The number of different programs that we do with community development block grants in rural areas is significant. I think the last one we did here was a fire truck, if I'm correct. Right now, we're talking and working with the town of St. Matthews in regards to a demolition project for residential houses, fifteen of them, and making sure, seeing if we can get that project off the ground so that the city can put those lots into good use and productive use instead of not being on the tax roll to get rid of those projects. We do local and regional planning. By the way, the community development block grants are slated to be eliminated. Economic development, we were started off by EDA, which is the Economic Development Administration, and that is part of the U.S. Department of Commerce. We are an EDD, which is an Economic Development District, and we are supposed to be out there helping communities with projects that will help the economy in a number of different ways. The last one that we did in this region over here was for Orangeburg Calhoun Tech, and that was with their nursing school. Last year, we were in conversation with Dr. Walt Tobin, great guy, in regards to an advanced manufacturing building. Right now, we have not received our planning grant from the feds. Usually, it's a three-year planning grant. We received that on January first. We have not received that yet. We're still waiting on it. We always hear, well, it's supposed to be happening this week for that for the last three weeks, okay? With that, that means that we can't do any real planning work with EDA, and we don't know if there's any program money behind there. And so Walt has been very, very fortunate in regards to the state that helped him with a grant for that building. We're hoping that we can do the same with EDA funding. So we're on hold right now on that. Our fear is that in the skinny budget, it may be eliminated, Economic Development Administration. Lower Savannah Regional Housing Consortium, those are when we go in and do rehabs on houses or help a developer build low to moderate income homes. That is also scheduled to be eliminated. The Area Disability and Transportation Resource Center, or Area Aging Agency on Aging, that had been doged. I'll talk a little bit about that in regards to ten thousand employees of HHS being laid off. And in addition to that, the organization that we work with in Washington, D.C. who supplies the money that comes to the state and then comes to us is proposed to be split. Tourism, we work with state funds on that. Workforce Development Program, we received an extra two hundred thousand dollars, which we feel very fortunate about. They're going to be moving those funds and workforce funds to block grants, most likely. There are, I think they said, twenty-three different organizations that do workforce programs, and so I think the feds will be looking to consolidate some of that, and those funds will start to come out in block grants. So I wanted to let you know that. Our finances. So most of our financing comes from the feds, about seventy-one percent. Now, I say that doesn't come directly to the organization, but a lot of that's passed through money, okay? So when we do housing, there's a piece of that that goes for administration, but the housing money for housing rehab goes directly to that project. The housing money that goes to the development of low to moderate income development goes to the development of that. Same with aging, same with most of our programs. We take a piece of that, but most of that, like I said, seventy-one percent, comes from the feds. For Calhoun County, what you give us every year, and we're extremely grateful for it, in dues, we're able to report that we give back a hundred and two dollars on your return on investment. We feel that we are a very good investment for Calhoun County, and that what you give us, we're able to multiply significantly. So we feel good about that. Up on the board, you can see that most of our programs up there, our largest program for money coming in is our aging program, followed by our workforce program, and then it goes down to some of our other programs, mostly economic and community development. Here in Calhoun County, I'm going to go to human services and aging programs. I mentioned before that the Department of Human Services has a number of different smaller divisions in it. One of those is the Administration of Community Living. What has been proposed and what's happening in Washington, D.C. is that administration is being split. One of those is for Medicaid and Medicare money. Those are the people who send out the checks. The other one is for family and children, and so they're going to try to lump the aging programs into that. The Older Americans Act, which we fall under for aging, has not been renewed at this time. We do through the aging program. Like I said, we receive money from the feds, goes down to the states, and comes to us. Some of that we work with and provide services for. Other services are provided by Calhoun here in your Council on Aging. They do a great job with that. So some of the programs that we do are the assessment, which we consider the gateway for us to understand who those people are and what their needs are. And then we're able to, with money being always an issue, work with them in regards to finding home-delivered meals, congregate meals, home care services, transportation services, caregivers, and some of the others. Now, right now, I mentioned that there are a couple of those things on the chopping block. Family caregiver funds is one of those. Last year, we were able to help eleven families with family caregiver funds. Our long-term care ombudsman, there are two residential care facilities here in Calhoun County. Our folks go visit them all the time. The most vulnerable people that we have in our community are not just the children, but seniors. And so our folks go in there as advocates for those seniors and make sure that if there's issues, they're helping them to bring those to light and bring those to where they need to be so they can be addressed. Also, to be eliminated, ombudsman was scheduled to be eliminated. The state, in their budget most recently, has put in five hundred and fifty thousand dollars into state ombudsman, and so hopefully that program will continue on. Also, in legal services, we've been able to provide six Calhoun seniors with legal services, and those are scheduled to be eliminated as well. The aging funding is one of those things that we have had lots and lots of issues with over the last year. We thank our board for helping us out with some of the issues that we had. That being said, we received our federal funding. This past year's federal funding, we received, well, it finally got approved in the continuing resolution of March fourteenth. However, we did not find out how much that money is going to be or receive that money until about the twenty-eighth of May. So that being said, what we were doing is if any leftover money that we have from the feds, we're putting that into a three-month contract for our providers to provide meals and other services. We got caught previously in projecting what we thought the budget should be, and the reality is, it didn't work this last time around. So this time around, we're going to make sure that doesn't happen, and we're only going to be putting out the funds that we have in-house. So right now, we're looking at the federal funds that we have in-house, and today, we're putting out contracts to all of our providers for the meals, transportation, and other programs that they provide. Those three-month contracts will be followed up, hopefully, on October first with six-month contracts, and we know that we need to get into a new... We're doing one-year contracts. We can't do that anymore. We knew we had to go to six-month contracts. Those six-month contracts can't be the same timeframe as they have been. Reason is, and I'll explain to you, the state will say, well, we'll give you the money, and it will be in our budget, and it'll be there July first. Reality is, it's never there on July first. So we end up floating it and making guesses, and that money usually comes in at the end of August. Same thing with our federal money. They let us know December should be there January first. Reality is, it doesn't come in until sometime in late February. So we feel that doing six-month contracts on a different schedule is going to make sure that the money is in the bank, and then we feel a whole lot better about doing those contracts. Any questions on that part? Up here, I have one vacancy. Actually, Sheila told me we do not have a vacancy. I apologize. Sheila has done a wonderful job, attends all the meetings, is very active, and really knows the aging community. She does a great job for you. Just wanted to let you know that. In the area of planning, we have, let's see, we've got our transportation planning meeting on May sixth here. Wasn't well-attended, but I appreciate Joshua Bond and some of the others who did come. We wanted to give the opportunity for some of our bigger growth areas to have that ability to tell us what was going on and their needs here in Calhoun County for transportation. So we're happy to have that here and thank the administration for that on May sixth. Our Transportation and Technical Advisory Committee members are Cody Hare, John McLaughlin, and Richard Carson. Appreciate what they do for us. As I said, we're in the midst of our long-range transportation plan, and we appreciate all the support that you provided for that. We're also starting off with our hazard mitigation plan, and that happens every five years, and that's a big project for us as well. In the area of community and economic development, I mentioned about the community development block grants to be eliminated, the potential projects in St. Matthews that we're working on. And back on March fourth, we did do a needs assessment here in Calhoun County, and the three things that came out that were most, highest priorities for the community members were economic development, workforce development, and infrastructure. So we have one project right now that's going on. It's a REA project. It is with the town of St. Matthews. It's a three-million-dollar project, and it's, let's see, one for well and I think it's wastewater or water lines. And that construction started in February, and they aim to be done at the end of this year. So happy to be moving with that project. The Home Consortium have done projects here in, I think, a couple of years, but always looking for good projects right now. The Board, last two weeks ago, it's one of those projects with housing rehabs. It's very, very difficult. You've got to find homes which need repairs, okay, but don't need a completely new house. You're really threading the needle along this. And so when you use federal money, you have to bring a house up to a hundred percent code, has to be completely redone. And being able to find a housing, you can do that under fifty or sixty thousand dollars is sometimes very difficult. So our folks are out there trying to thread the needle on that. The Board, two weeks ago, approved moving the limit from fifty thousand to sixty thousand on for each house. We may have to look at raising that again in the future. As you well know, construction costs have gone up, lumber has gone up, and the cost of just about everything has gone up. So we're going to have to take a look at that as well. And then finally, workforce development. We have the mobile unit. The mobile unit has been over here eight times. They've been visiting Well Fit, the S.S., Calhoun County High, and camped out in front of the Piggly Wiggly at different times. Gary Jones is your chair, and he is a wonderful chair and really conscientious about workforce development. And Pat Black has been on that committee for years and does a great job as well. The numbers are there for you, but the business that we do in regard to workforce development, I think is strong right now. I think that it may change in the future, just like everything else. That being said, I think that it really can benefit the community. We're looking forward to seeing how it comes out and how we can move with it to make sure that people who need jobs and training get that training and jobs. The last thing I have on here is upcoming events. As mentioned, we had our board meeting two weeks ago. We've got a transportation TAC meeting on July sixteenth that will be over in Barnwell County. And then we have our next board meeting, August fourteenth, in Orangeburg County. Those are usually six p.m. meetings, six p.m. dinner. The meeting starts at six-thirty. And with that, got any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions or comments?
What time's that TAC meeting in Barnwell? What time's that TAC meeting in Barnwell?
It's usually ten o'clock in the morning, sir.
What are the times that the workforce van comes over to the parking lot?
They come over once a month, ma'am, but I can get you the... They're usually here from ten to two, okay?
Okay. Well, I'm curious if we could maybe get it later, like when people are off work, people that maybe have jobs that want to change jobs, for those people to attend sometime, if that would be okay?
Yeah.
We could try that.
Yeah, we could work that out.
Okay.
Like the idea, and you're exactly right. What we try to do, too, is make sure that we're there for job fairs and other activities so that those will run a lot longer. So it's just not your regular ten to two, but it runs with the event. So if it's a weekend event, they will be at that as well.
Okay, thank you.
I like the idea.
You know, I usually get an email on that, I think, when they're coming, don't I?
You very well could, sir. I'll make sure that that goes out, and y'all get that.
Okay.
It's a good list, and they let you know beforehand at the beginning of the month where they're going to be. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think they do.
On a side note, I just want to let you know that we've worked with John for years, not just here, but in Orangeburg County, and he will be very much missed. We look very much forward to working with his predecessor or following him, and we know he's going to do a great job for y'all.
Okay. Thank you, Doctor. Next on the agenda is the Calhoun County Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Program Audit Report.
So last year, we were notified by the Department of Revenue that we got pulled for a penny sales tax audit in which we started meetings, had the first kickoff meeting with the Department of Revenue, and they just recently sent us the results here back on the eleventh. The attached final audit report reflects the Department of Revenue's conclusion regarding the collection of capital project, Calhoun County capital project sales tax and the expenditures of the funds collected. The audit scope included a review of the sales tax revenue collected for the period from May first of 2019 through June the thirtieth of 2024, as well as a review of the expenditures of the revenues collected. This audit concludes that Calhoun County is in compliance with the Calhoun, with the capital project sales tax and use tax in the 2018 referendum for this audit period. I do want to thank certainly the Finance Department, several versions of CFOs during this period of time, the current Finance Department, Richard and Brandy, for pulling all this information. It was a team effort pulling this together. I'm proud that we did not have any deficiencies coming from Orangeburg. In these audits, there was usually always something that was brought to our attention. But certainly, the full audit report will be posted tomorrow morning on our county website if anybody's interested in the numbers and what was collected. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Is that an action item?
No, sir. No action. That's just for information.
John, quick question. Was there any reason why that we were...
Just, no. They randomly pull from time to time, and we were randomly pulled.
Okay.
Let me just say, I was kind of happy that they did audit us because this proved that we, first time doing that, and we did a real good job. I appreciate our staff, what you guys did with that.
Well, there's so many moving parts with the penny sales tax and so many individuals involved, you always wonder yourself to make sure that everything is going right. So, no, I was appreciative that they did.
Yeah, I want to thank all the departments, everybody involved that worked on that.
Okay. No more appearances. We down to resolutions. Resolution eight dash twenty-two-five, a resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding and agreement between Calhoun County and the South Carolina Association of Counties relating to the South Carolina Association of Counties being authorized and designated as a claimant agent for the county pursuant in the South Carolina Set Off Debt Collection Act 2023 as amended. We need any explanation on that. Everybody understand. Okay. We have a motion for approval of Resolution eight dash twenty dash twenty-five.
So moved, second.
Properly moving, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. The ayes have it. New business down to the Calhoun County Transportation Committee, Engineering Services. We need some action on that.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to inform you that this contract for services was up to be renewed. We put out a request for qualifications. We sent, we received a number of those back. I think four or five came back. And once again, ICE Infrastructure Resources was the bidder of recommendation. So the recommendation is to award the CTC Engineering Services Contract to ICE, ICE.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract for engineer services to ICE.
Second.
That's just a retainer, right?
It's a contract, yes, sir.
Well, but it went on the... It's got a contract bound on it?
Yes, sir. That's right. It's a retainer.
Right.
Had a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. The ayes have it. Okay. Under ordinances.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay. Ordinance fourteen dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance approving a loan from the South Carolina Public Service Authority to Calhoun County, South Carolina, to finance certain improvements to the waterworks and sewer system of Calhoun County and other matters related thereto.
Okay. May I have a motion that we approve by title only, ordinance fourteen dash twenty-two-five?
So moved, second.
Properly moving, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. The ayes have it. We down to Administrator.
Yes, sir. Just one thing. Certainly, this Saturday, we will be having our Fourth of July fireworks show. The panel will start around six, six-thirty, and the fireworks will start at nine. And certainly, we'd love to have everybody's attendance for that.
Okay. Before we... That's all you got, John?
Yes, sir.
Before we go into the session, Richard, you had something?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So as most of councilors should know, and those in the audience may or may not know, this is John's last council meeting. His term will end up on June thirtieth, so we wanted to thank him for his years of service both here and across the state, thirty-plus years in local government and with the Department of Health and Environmental Control, DES. So we appreciate and recognize, wanted to recognize his commitment to local government. It's not always an easy job. More often than not, it's a pretty difficult job. Seems to get more so as the years go by. So we just wanted to take a moment and say thank you for that. And we've got a little presentation here to make, and if, you know, council could come down, maybe we could get a picture of John in the presentation. I appreciate it, and just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you and appreciate what he's done for the county. As the next guy coming in, it makes it pretty easy to step into something that's already running as a well-oiled machine, and so hopefully I can not manage to run it off the tracks. So, thank you.
You want to hold accountable?
If you would, yes, sir. You can come forward.
Let me just say, this is kind of business. We understand what John is doing. I don't blame him. He's served, been serving long, damn long, as long as I have been. He's got some capacity, and I know what it is. We're not going to lose him completely. I want you to know that. He's still going to be serving us in some capacity in Calhoun County. I really appreciate the services that he's given me, because my job has been made much easier. I know a lot of times when folks come to me, I can throw up, give them a phone, John, upset them down. So you've got to take care of it for me. So I know it's a hard job doing that.
So I know it's a hard job doing that, and I know what you get from the public, because I've been serving the public a long time too, and a lot of times, it's not that they mean a lot of times, people just don't understand. So we just want to tell you we appreciate the job, because that's for Calhoun County. I think it's been tremendous these couple of years. I've served several administrators, all administrators, I guess, that's what, worked for this county enough. I'm not going to say anything about anybody.
I know, you're best.
I really am.
You're my favorite.
No, thank you. All of you have put up with me, certainly, and a few of you for hiring me. It hadn't always been easy, but, you know, even the bad times weren't so bad, looking back at it now. But certainly, I leave it in good hands. I would not be leaving if it wasn't in good hands, and I'm not just talking about Richard, but all the staff. We've made a lot of changes, some were hard, some were easy, but they need to be made. And I know Richard will make, like he told me, Mr. James, I want somebody that's willing to make the tough decisions.
Right. And I told John that when I hired him, that we're going to have to make some tough decisions. We were probably going to have to let some people go, and break it up. I mean, you, we just didn't push people out, but we just made the decision that we had to make, and I think we made us a better county than that. Thank you.
John, thank you. Appreciate your opinion. I was going to say, the hard times weren't so bad, let me take this back.
I think we scheduled for executive session now, but I got, Richard, I think you had some comments you wanted to make before we go. I wanted to make these comments because a lot of times, we lose people when we go into executive session. They're not here anymore. He wants, I think you want some of the public to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, I've talked to Richard and John about spectrum, fixing these fire rocket cables down lower part of the county. I just want to call it out that we definitely got some opportunities, and we as a county need to get with spectrum and put some pressure on them, because there's some areas that's pretty ugly down in the lower part. So just wanted to call that out.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Thank everybody for coming. I entertain a motion now for...
Mr. Chair, you ready?
Yeah, for legal advice in the executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session to receive legal advice.
Second.
Properly moved and second that we go into executive session to receive legal advice from an attorney. Any further discussion?
There will be, there will be no vote coming out.
There'll be no vote coming out, that's what. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, aye. Thank everyone for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Mull, for coming. You can see it all the way from Macon over here. Yeah, I appreciate it.